Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I was allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, actually Rod's got it. Go ahead. There it is.
Good evening to those in attendance and also those watching at home. For the benefit of those who have not previously attended a zoning board hearing, the procedure is as follows. The petitions will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda, however, the chair may change their order at their discretion. The board will treat all petitioners, their representatives, abudders, and other interested parties fairly and with respect. The petitioner will be asked to give an overview of their petition and read through the responses to the criteria applicable to their case, allowing for the board to ask questions after each item. State law and local ordinances establish the criteria that must be met in order for the board to grant approval to a petition, and it is the petitioner's responsibility to demonstrate that they have met each criterion. Following the presentation, the chair will open the floor for public comment, either in favor of or opposed to the request. If necessary, an opportunity for rebuttal will be offered to the petitioner and the public. However, discussion will not be allowed to devolve back and forth arguments. All comments should be made directed toward the chair. Should a question be asked, the chair will pose the question to the petitioner. Afterward, the chair will close the public hearing, and the board will deliberate and vote on the petition. At this time, please silence all mobile devices. Thank you.
Thank you, Rod. So, again, welcome to the February 26th Zoning Board of Adjustments meeting for the town of Merrimack. The next meeting for the zoning board will be March 26th at 6:30 PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Before we start, the petition for John O'Neil and Tinker Road LLC, variance under Section 2.01.7 of the zoning ordinance to construct a proposed 69-unit elderly housing development beyond the required radius from the intersection of Daniel Webster Highway and Babusick Lake Road, that item due to a legal notice error will not be heard this evening. That item is going to be moved to the March meeting, again, due to a legal hearing notice error. Not all the abudders were notified, so that will be moved. So if you're here for that petition, that petition is being moved to March. Do we need, we don't need a vote or anything on that, correct?
No vote is required because the hearing will be re-notice, so anyone who is a direct abutter to that project will get a new notice in the mail notifying them of the next meeting, which should be in March.
Okay, thank you very much. So, anybody here for that? All right. Anybody is planning on speaking this evening for, against a petition, or delivering information about a petition? If you're going to be doing any speaking, I need you to raise your right hand. Speaking? If you'll be speaking this evening at all regarding a petition, raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? All right. All right, the first petition is Felipe Concalves? Concalves, okay. And premier commercial properties LLC owner, special exception under Section 2.02.13D, 1D of the zoning ordinance to permit a church use in the Town Center Overlay District. This parcel is located at 420 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial, Aquifer Conservation, Elderly Overlay, and Town Center Overlay Districts Tax Map 5D-4 Lot 3.1, Case Number ZVA 2025. If you just want to make sure that the green light is on, and if you both could state your name for the record?
My name is Felipe Concalves.
My name is Chris Camboris.
Okay. So Felipe, why don't you kind of give us an overview of what we're going to be hearing today?
So we're looking to convert this, used to be a Rite Aid, into a church. The building's a pretty square, you know, nice, open canvas for that. It's got plenty of parking for what we're trying to do over there, and we're looking to bring our church over from Nashua to this location.
Okay, all right. All right, so in the, in the special, in the special exception, you have, there, well, there's one question, but there's an A, B, C, and D section. I need you, for the record, to read in the section and then read in your reply, and if you could stop after each in case there's any questions from the board?
Okay.
Thank you.
Question is, the applicant shall address the criteria as outlined in Section 2.02.13D of the zoning ordinance. A, the site is in appropriate location for the proposed use in accordance with the Town Center Plan. It's a, it's an area right off the highway, it's got plenty of parking, and it's located in a well-known area for a church. That was my reply.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Any? Okay, go on to B, please.
The proposed use would not result in significantly increased hazard to vehicles or pedestrians by way of traffic congestion ingress or egress because there's appropriate signage already, and the traffic is directed in a way where there's a light that stops the traffic from going left and right, right out of the building, so I don't see any of that as being an issue for cars coming in and out of there.
Okay. Questions? All right, C?
C, the proposed use would not result in unreasonable impacts to abutting properties by way of increased noise, odor, visual blight, or other, I struggle with that word, nuisance because...
Nuance, yeah, nuisance.
Yep. All services happen inside of the building, so there's no noise happening outside, no odor unless, you know, the smell of the church. And there's no cooking or anything of that matter outside unless it's a special cookout for, you know, permitted for that reason. So there shouldn't be any of those disturbances happening outside as all the activities happen inside of the building.
Okay, and D?
The proposed use is designed in harmony with the overall goals of the Town Center Plan with respect to building, transportation corridor, and site design and arrangement because the overall look of the location will not change, just some signage where the Rite Aid signage is, you know, upkeep with the landscape and keeping the property well-maintained, and, you know, so people can locate the church as they're driving by, so there will be no major disturbance to what's already there.
Are there going to be any changes to the exterior of the building, just out of curiosity?
We're proposing just paint and signage, just for the logo of the church, right where the Rite Aid side would be, and then upkeep with the paint on the outside of the building, you know, as needed.
Structurally, no changes, just paint the exterior.
How many, how many parishioners?
Right now, we're at about 150 per service. We have two services on Sunday.
And you get about, what, 75 a service?
It's about like 100 in the morning, and then about 100 at night, 120, 100. Some people serve two services because they end up volunteering in the morning and at night.
Right. You don't, have you looked at the parking capacity here?
Yeah, so three per spot. We have about 113, given us, you know, maximum occupancy at 300. We don't have nearly as many because a lot of families come, so they'll come, you know, three or four per car. Right now, where we're at is we're at about 50, 55 cars.
Okay, so it's not 150 cars?
No, no.
It's 50?
Yeah. Between kids and everybody in, yeah, everybody in the building, so we'll say like, you know, husband, wife, and then one, one kid that would come as a family, they would be in one vehicle.
And service, and so, and the primary services would be Sunday?
Yep.
Would there be, what activities does the church do outside of the Sunday services?
So we have a midweek service and a youth service.
Is the midweek service a day or evening?
Evening, mostly evening activities.
Every evening or just one?
No, it's, so, youth usually runs Fridays, two services on Sundays, and then at most, at maximum capacity, say when the church grows to be as big as it can be, it's two midweek services, we'll say like a Tuesday and a Thursday. That depends on how, you know, pastor decides that item, but I'm just using that as an example.
Colleen, is, Colleen? Next step, this will go to planning if it's approved, because they have to do capacity and all of that?
Yes, if the board grants the special exception, it would go before planning board for site plan approval.
Site plan approval, that's my thought, okay.
We have done a conceptual with them already to get some feedback, and...
What was their feedback?
Their feedback was, same question you raised regarding the parking and how we're going to have provisions with that, so we already started working on that and having like, we don't expect to be at maximum capacity at all right now, but already having provisions for renting the parking lot on the street next door.
What do you mean, the street or next door?
Not on the street. Yeah, I think he means the adjacent plaza.
Yeah.
Is Merrimack Valley Plaza, and so it's one shared red light signal to enter the property. The form of Rite Aid, my building is on the right, and then the plaza's on the left. And so, there's over 100 stalls right now, I think 113, I think we said, and 113 stalls just for our building.
Yeah.
And then next door, Merrimack Valley Plaza, they've already had discussions to have shared parking adjacent to there. That's where the diner is and so on. So that parking at night, when the majority of all the other businesses are pretty much closed and so on, this should not, we're not expecting any sort of parking issues and so on.
Other questions from the board? Thank you. Precious? Just out of curiosity, where in Nashua are you now?
I'm not really, hard to explain, but I exit four, right off of exit four.
Okay. All right, I know that there, all right. Any other questions, concerns, thoughts? All right, I'm going to open this up to the public. Is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody that'd like to speak against this petition? Okay, with no one coming forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any other final questions before we go into deliberations for our guests? Okay?
Say what denomination this church is?
It doesn't really matter.
Doesn't matter?
Yeah. We don't take that, you know, it doesn't matter. All right.
I'd like to make a motion?
And let any, for you do. Any discussion items, anybody has any questions? Anybody want to discuss anything, voice anything? Now's the time to do it. Rod's hot to go right now.
No, I thought we had completed the discussions, that's why.
I think it'd be good to see the Rite Aid building being reused.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree. You having the building is, yeah. It would, you know, it's nice that the, every building's getting reused instead of building something new, so I agree. All right, if there's nothing, then Rod, I'll turn it over to you.
I agree that it would be nice to have that building not vacant any longer. I make a motion that the board finds petitioner's response to the special exception criteria of the zoning ordinance as sufficient, proved each criterion is met, and the board adopts the petitioner's responses as the board finds a fact, and further to grant the special exception under Section 2.02.13D, 1D of the zoning ordinance to permit a church use in the Town Center Overlay District subject to the following conditions, that the petitioner shall seek site plan approval for the proposed use.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Ben seconds. Motion made by Rod, Ben seconds. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Steen, it says 500. This part's, this part's done, you're all set.
Thank you.
You're approved.
Thank you.
Good luck with planning. Well, he has a 30-day in which somebody can appeal it, but next step is planning. Thank you, gentlemen, have a good evening. All right. Next petition is, is it Witting Building or? Whiting. Whiting Building LLC, variance under Section 2.01.7 of the zoning ordinance to permit an elderly assisted living facility and adult daycare beyond the required radius from the intersection of Daniel Webster Highway and Babusick Lake Road. This parcel is located at 7 Henry Clay Drive in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts Tax Map 2D-4 Lot 1-3, Case Number ZVA 2025-24. I'm sorry, -04. If you both could, make sure the lights are on and state your name for the record, please.
Dmitri Jurovsky.
Dmitri.
Luis Calves.
All right. If one of you gentlemen would like to kind of give us an overview of what we're looking at before we get into the criteria?
Okay, so right now, what we're proposing to do is non-medical adult daycare and assisted living facility.
Okay.
Right now, the complex is around 20,000 square feet. We decided to take half of it, between 5,000 and 10,000 square feet, and we're asking for a special exception to, for caregiving large and residents. That's the zoning.
You're only looking to take half of the facility, is that what I heard?
Right, we're not, we can't take the whole building, so we're just going to use half of it. I brought some, we already have an architect doing a drawing and to see what it will be like.
And this is going to be residence as well, so it's residence and living facility?
Well, it's an adult, non-medical adult daycare, and taking care of all people, and then just, if somebody's just going to drop his dad, his mom, be there the whole day, we'll take care of them, and then we'll drive them back home.
Okay, so you'd be transporting as well?
As well, yes.
Okay.
Question?
Go ahead.
I drive by there on the way to the Y, and there's two buildings there, and I didn't quite catch which one. Is that the first one where there's a school also?
Exactly, correct. The one with the school.
Okay, thank you.
The first floor is the school, the whole second floor is going, is 20,000 square feet, and we're going to plan to take half of it.
So you'll be on the second floor?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
This is, this is, yeah, this is the building right across from the Y, right? Yeah.
Yeah, there's two buildings there, I wasn't sure which ones.
Yeah, yeah, you know, it's a good question, good question. All right, any other questions before, I have him start with the criteria.
Yeah, so you said, well, it says in here assisted living facility, but it's not a living facility, it's, it's not an overnight residence.
Well, we plan to have between five and 10 people to stay there, okay, and then there's one that go back home at the end of the day. So we do, we are going to have overnight people, yes.
Okay.
Okay, but that's non-medical?
Non-medical, correct. So in other words, we help them with the bathing, all the base necessities, getting their stuff, whatever they need.
And they stay there overnight, and then you have a staff there as well overnight as well?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so if you want, there is five criteria that are part of this. If you could start and stop after each, after you read in the criteria, if you could stop after each if there's any questions, starting with granting the variance, please.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
You're saying there'll be no medical? If you've got people staying there, living there, wouldn't you be required to have medical staff?
Well, we do have RN, we propose to have RN and caregivers, but it's not, the place itself is non-medical, so people that only are aged but not in critical condition?
There'll be no procedures of any sort?
Right, no, nothing.
Okay.
Nothing like that.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Okay, so this facility will help meet the needs of the aging population, number one. Does it come with the surroundings? The proposed facility is designed to be compatible with the surroundings neighborhood. We have taken into consideration the architectural style, landscaping, and traffic patterns to ensure that it integrates seamlessly with the community. It benefits the community establishing this facility. Will not only provide essential services to residents, but it'll also create job opportunities and stimulate the local economy. Migration or potential concerns, we're limited to addressing any concerns related to noise, traffic, and environment impact. There's plenty of parking and everything over there, and...
So you do, so, okay, so the first part here, it says granting the variance will not be contrary to public interest. So you have first bullet points, community need improved, that was the one I was looking for. This right here, you wrote this out and submitted this?
I don't have that one.
You don't have that one?
No.
All right, do we have an extra copy for him, please? Thank you.
Okay.
So first part, granting the variance?
Okay, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, because it would mean...
You can read what you have there, that, we need to have that put into record.
Right, okay, so this facility will meet the needs of the aging population, right? And...
All right, so this part here, granting the variance? That, there's, you have six bullet points that I need you to read in for the record.
Can you read it word for word?
Okay, just read this?
Yes.
Okay. All right, for the record, okay. Community, there's a demonstrated need for nursing homes and assisted living facilities in our area. As reflected in demographic studies and community feedback, providing such services will enhance the community of life for seniors and individuals requiring assisting aligning with public interest in supporting vulnerable populations. Number two, improve care options. The facility will offer essential healthcare services, improving access to care for residents, and elevating pressure on hospitals and emergency services. This aligns with public health goals and promote community wellness. Number three, economic benefits. The establishment of the nursing home assisted living facility will create jobs, stimulate local economy growth, and potentially increase property values in the area. This economic activity is beneficial to community, to the community as a whole. Compatibility with existing uses, the proposed facility has been designed to be compatible with surrounding land uses, ensuring that it integrates well into the neighborhood. Measures will be taken to minimize any potential negative impacts such as noise or traffic. And the community engagement, we have actively sought input for community members and stakeholders, ensuring that their concerns are addressed. This facility will include features that promote community interaction and support, fostering a sense of belonging. And regulatory compliance, the project will comply with applicable health and safety regulation, ensuring that the facility operates within established guidelines and is designed to protect the public interest. In summary, granting the variance will facilitate the development of much-needed facilities that align with community values, support public health objectives, and contributes positively to the local economy.
So you said that, you list here an improved care options, healthcare services, alleviating pressure on hospitals and emergency services, but you said that there's no medical?
Well...
So I guess, if you could clarify that.
Yeah, when we first put it, we, we wanted it as a nursing, but we were told that it's not, it's an assisted living. When we first started going to it, it was going to be like a nursing home, but it's not a nursing home, it's an assisted living home.
But you're actually going to have people that are living there.
Yeah, they will be living there.
So what's the difference between a nursing home and an assisted living?
Well, the assisted living is, like it says, you know, just, they don't, they don't require medical attention. They're not in, in, in any kind of like danger that they need a doctor right away. It's just an elderly person being in the house.
Okay. So, so, but, okay. So they don't require any type of like...
Well, they're required to take their medicine, they're going to have a caretaker to do that, but nothing, like, they're not connected into no systems, nothing like that.
Right, but, and I get that, and I guess what I'm, I guess I'm a little confused on, and maybe...
There are, there are a fine line of being self-sufficient.
As opposed, Cole, you can be self-sufficient living in a nursing home, too.
I, I...
That depends.
I've got, I've got, I've got a family friend that's in a nursing, nursing home, and that nursing home has three distinct areas. There's assisted living, where the person can move around on their own, actually get to a dining hall, but they're not in a comfortable position according to family to live in their own home. Then you've got some other clients that need more hourly, or day-to-day coverage and care.
Okay.
So I think the assisted living is, is for the, I'm guessing, they can move around on their own, but they're not trusted to be in their own home.
Correct. So if they're in their own, they could, like, if they need to go to the bathroom, if they stand on their own, there's a chance they may fall. All right, so they're going to be a caregiver that accompany them to do their...
Okay. Questions? All right, number two, it's on the next page there, spirit of the ordinance is observed?
Okay, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because of community welfare. The ordinance aims to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the community by allowing the establishment of an assisted living facility. We are directly addressing the needs of growing population of seniors and individuals requiring care. Those enhances the quality of life and well-being. Positive land use, the ordinance encourages compatible land use that benefits the community. The proposed facility is designated to fit within the existing neighborhood, contributing to a diverse range of housing and care options. This aligns with the ordinance's goal of fostering a balanced and inclusive community. Enhancement of local services, the spirit of the ordinance includes the provision of essential services to residents by allowing this facility. We are expanding healthcare and support services available within the community, which is consistent with the intent to improve resident access to necessary care. Promoting community engagement, the facility will serve as a community hub, offering opportunities to engagement and interacting among residents, families, and local organizations. This aligns with the ordinance's goal of fostering community cohesion and support networks. Mitigation of negative impact, we are committed to implementing measures that minimize any potential adverse effects on the surrounding area, such as traffic management and noise reduction. This proactive approach is in line with the ordinance's aim to protect character and quality of the neighborhood. Compliance with regulations, the proposed facility will adhere to all relevant health, safety, and zoning regulations, ensuring that it operates within the framework established by the ordinance. This compliance demonstrates our commitment to upholding the principle that ordinance seeks and promote. In summary, granting the variance to establish a nursing home assisted living honors the spirit of the ordinance by enhancing community welfare, promoting compatible land use, and ensuring access to essential services while maintaining the character of the neighborhood.
Any questions?
We're striking nursing home out of these comments right?
Yeah, nursing home should be replaced, assisted, assisted living is what we're going to be going with on that.
Yes.
Number three?
Number three. Grant, granting the variance will substantially just, justice, do a substantial justice because addressing community needs, the variance enables the development of assisted living facility that fulfills critical need in the community by providing necessary care options for seniors and individuals with disabilities. We are promoting a well-being of a vulnerable population, thereby serving the greater good of the community. Balance in interest, while the ordinance sets a specific requirements, the unique circumstances of our requests demonstrate that the benefits of allowing this facility far outweigh any potential drawbacks. Granted, the variance recognizes the importance of adapting regulations to meet the evolving needs of the community, which is fundamental principle of justice. Economic and social benefits, the establishment of the facility will create jobs and stimulate the local economy, which aligns with public interest by allowing this variance. We're providing economic opportunity while simultaneously enhancing the quality of life of residents. The balance of economic and social benefits serves justice by promoting community prosperity. Competency, compatibility and surroundings, the proposed facility has been designed to integrate well with surrounding community, minimizing disruption and ensuring that it complements existing land uses. Granted, this variance will support the notion of fairness by allowing the development that is considered by neighbors and contributes positively to the local environment. Community engagement and support, the variance request has been shaped by input from community members and stakeholders, demonstrating our commitment to transparency and collaboration. By granting this variance, the decision will reflect the collective voice of the community, ensuring that the local needs and desires are prioritized. Regulatory flexibility, the ability to grant the variance allows for reasonable flexibility within the regulatory framework, enabling local authorities to make decisions that reflect the specific context of the situation. This flexibility ensures that justice is served by allowing for thoughtful case-by-case evaluation that considers the unique characteristic of each request. In conclusion, granting the variance will do substantial justice by addressing the pressing needs of the community, balancing the interests of various stakeholders, and promoting both economic, economic and social benefits while maintaining harmony with the neighborhood. This approach simplifies fairness and equity in decision-making, ultimately saving the best interest for the community as a whole.
Any questions?
I got one.
Go ahead.
So I keep seeing references to, like, community. So, like, the decision will reflect the collective voice of the community, and studies have shown that there's an increased need for these types of facilities. What, can you summarize that need and the studies that were done, and where you...
Well, basically, it's the need of the people that, you know, have nowhere else. There's a lot of, there was, if we don't put them in the system, and, 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 um, they will, they won't have the care that they need, you know what I mean? They don't have the... I just don't know how to put it.
Okay, so we're not referencing actual, like, a study or something that you've gone out and done and gathered data on for the need for this type of facility, right? Okay. You're just seeing it as a...
Yeah, we just basic, uh, caregiving assistance.
Observation?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, that being said, I mean, there's an aging population, so. Go ahead.
Is there an entity, an organization that exists that's gonna...
Well, this time, yes, we have a, we've been, we have an entity that we have it in Hudson, New Hampshire. We had had five years taking care of old people.
What's the name of the entity?
Bedside Home Care Services.
Bedside Home Care Services?
Yes, and it's in 188 Central Street in Hudson, New Hampshire. And what we do is in-home care service, so this, instead of they being at our location, we go to them, we send a caregiver to them, and we've been doing it almost five years now.
Now, is this home care services, is it a...
Bedside Home Care Services.
Is it a nonprofit?
No, no, it's not a nonprofit.
For-profit entity?
Yes, yes.
And is it tied to any medical facilities or...
No, not, non-medical.
Insurance companies?
All our, all our services are non-medical. Just helping the, the patients with their errands and their basic necessities.
So that's a pretty big space, that whole second floor. Are they, are these like apartments, these people?
No, right now, it was an office, and I have actually a rendering that I'm able to show.
Unfortunately, can't take any pictures after, at the meeting. I mean, I'm just looking at the building itself, if you're on the second floor of that building, that's a big space.
Yeah, it's a big space, that's why we're only taking half of it. It's too much.
Oh, you're only taking half of the second floor?
It's twenty thousand square feet, we're gonna be utilizing between five and ten thousand square feet, because it's a huge facility.
Five and ten thousand, so do each of the people living there, they have an apartment, they have a room?
Well, what happened is, right now, there's cubicles, like, if there were offices.
Yeah.
Uh, they're about eight hundred square feet each.
Yeah.
And we're gonna, we have an architect have a rendering to make them livable. We're gonna turn it like, kind of to a, like, a bedroom.
With its own bathroom and stuff?
Right. Two of the units will have a bathroom, because right now, there'll be a separate place where they shower, so there's two showers, bathrooms, and right now, there's existing seven bathrooms on the floor.
So you're gonna create eight, eight hundred square feet apartments or rooms with a bathroom?
Okay, right now, we're gonna use half of the area, and we're gonna use, we're gonna do like eight studios, let's call them studios.
Okay. And the studios are eight hundred square feet?
Right, so each of those will have one person, right? The whole area's gonna take ten people. So each one is gonna have their own living space, their ba, their bed, bathroom, everything like that.
Okay.
So...
And those studios are eight hundred square feet?
I would say between eight hundred square feet each, like, let's call it like a little studio.
Right, that's why I'm asking how big the studio is.
I don't know the sizes, but I have the rendering. It's gonna be something like about, I would say like eight hundred square feet, you know, like...
And it's a pretty good size.
Pretty good size, yes. They have, because you gotta realize that each one of the units has to have, it has to be handicap accessible, they could be in a wheelchair. So if you have a small place, they're not gonna have...
That's why I'm asked, that's why I'm asking about the size, if they are using some sort of a walker.
The rendering includes each one, they, we are assuming not all of them will have handicap, or will have be on a, on a wheelchair, but we have taken into the context, just in case, because if they have a wheelchair, they'd be able to maneuver.
And that's a, and they're, and each of them, all, each of the, each of the studios have their own bathroom as well?
Two of the units will have their own bathroom, and then there's the main, we are designing a, a main shower stalls in the area, in the specific bathroom area, and two of them will have, uh, like a bathroom.
So two, so two apartments are gonna share a bathroom, or two of the studios are gonna share a bathroom?
Well, what happens is, is we have places, like, if there's a husband and wife, they will have their own bathroom. The other ones will have a caregiver bring them to the, to the bathroom. Remember, these people cannot get up on their own.
What else, what else is, what else is on this floor besides the studios?
At this time, uh...
Well, what else will be on the floor?
Nothing, downstairs, there's a school.
Right, on the, on the upstairs, in this, in your section, what else gonna be there? Are you gonna have, I mean cafeteria, dayroom, all of that?
So what we have designed is, there's a sitting area, there's a TV area, there's a dining room, there's a TV room, uh, there's a conference room.
Okay.
And, and there's a play area.
So you're gonna build a kitchen as well?
A big kitchen, yes, we need a big kitchen and a, and a dining room area for twenty people.
Okay. Now, you said this is daycare as well, so do you have people that are just gonna be there during the day?
Correct, so what happens is, if, if you have an elderly parent or mom, and you, you, you gotta go to work, and you don't wanna leave them by themselves, just like you do with a, with a small child.
No, I understand.
You bring him, you bring him to the area, and then either they bring him, or we'll pick him up and bring him back. The facility right now has parking for around, how many cars?
Two hundred.
Two hundred cars.
Okay. Alright, granting the variance will not diminish, diminish values. Number four.
Number four. Okay, granting the variance will not diminish the value surrounding, okay. Compatible land use, the proposed assisted living facility is designed to be compatible with the surrounding land uses and architectural style, landscaping, and overall design have been carefully considered to ensure that it complements the neighborhood, thereby enhancing the overall aesthetic and disability, I don't know that word, of the area. Increased demand for housing, as the population ages, there's a growing demand for senior living options. The presence of a well-managed assisted living facility can attract more residents to the area, increasing the demand for nearby properties and potentially raising property values. Economy growth and job creation, the establishment of the facility will generate jobs and stimulate local economy activity, increase employment opportunities, and increment vitality. The area can lead to an overall enhancement of property values, as thriving communities tend to be more attracted to potential home buyers and investors. Improved community service, by providing essential healthcare and support services to residents, the facility will contribute to the overall well-being and quality of life in the community. A community with access to quality health services is often perceived as more desirable, which can positively impact property values. Community engagement and support, the facility development has involved engagement with community members and stakeholders, ensuring that their concerns are addressed. A facility that is supported by the community is likely to be viewed positively, further mitigating any potential negative perception that could affect property values. Enhanced neighborhood stability, the assisted living facility often contribute to neighborhood stability by providing long-term residence who might support local businesses and community initiatives. This stability can enhance the overall attractiveness of the area, benefiting surrounding property values. And a regulatory oversight, the facility will comply with all zoning, health, and safety regulation, ensuring that it operates within established guidelines, designed to protect the character of the neighborhood. These oversights maintain and potentially enhance property values by ensuring that the facility is well-managed and does not negatively impact the surrounding areas. In summary, granting the variance is unlikely to diminish the value of surrounding properties, rather it has the potential to enhance them by promoting compatible land use, economic growth, and community well-being. The total integration of the facility in the neighborhood will foster a positive environment that benefits all residents and property owners.
Questions? Alright, if you could read number five, please, on unnecessary hardship?
Okay, unnecessary hardship. Allowing the following special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, explain how no fair relationship between, okay. Existing infrastructure, the property already has existing infrastructure such as utilities and access roads that are specifically suited for assisted living facility. This existing infrastructure is not present in other properties, making it uniquely positioned for search and development. The proximity to the services, the property is located near essential services such as hospital, medical office, and public transportation, which makes it particularly suited for assisted living facility. No fair and substantial relationship given these special conditions, we can urge that there's no fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of the provision of this property. The purpose of the ordinance, the general public purpose of the ordinance is to maintain the character of the neighborhood, ensure the compatibility of land uses, and promote public health, safety, and welfare. Applying the ordinance strictly to this property, given the unique conditions, will prevent the establishment of a facility that serves a critical community needed, which is assisted living. The strict adherence to the ordinance will not only hinder the property's potential, but it also denies the community access to essential healthcare services that benefit the public welfare. Disproportionate impact, the specific application of the ordinance in this case will result in a disproportionate impact of the property owner, as well as the community, that will benefit from the proposed facility. Other properties in the area may not share the same conditions, and the disordinance application to this property is not just or equitable. Community benefits, the establishment of the assisted living facility will provide a significant community benefit, including increased access to care for seniors, job creation, and economic stimulation. Denying the variance will negate this benefit, which align with the broader goals of the ordinance to provide, to promote public welfare. In conclusion, the unique condition of the property create a situation with a strict application of the ordinance does not serve the intended public purpose, purpose, uh, purpose, I'm sorry, and result in unnecessary hardship. Granted, the variance will allow for a full, for a use that would not only suitable for the property, but also beneficial to the community at large.
Colleen, so if I think that that's been met, do we, he needs, he doesn't need reading B, right?
Um, no, that's okay.
The proposed use, if we felt that unnecessary hardship was met? Do we feel that unnecessary hardship was met, or any questions, concerns?
What's the staffing level gonna be?
I'm sorry?
What, what would be your staffing level in this facility?
Okay, so we, we're gonna have a registered nurse, we're gonna have four caregivers, we're gonna have a physical therapist, uh, we're gonna have a driver, and a cook, and a manager.
I counted six. Any other questions? Concerns, thoughts, before I open the public? Anybody? Ben? Alright, I'd like to open the public hearing, is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody that'd like to speak against this petition? Okay, with nobody coming forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any final questions for... Okay, if there's, so let's, let's talk, what are our thoughts here, folks?
So, the ordinance talks about, like, making sure that these facilities are within the town square for various reasons, one of them may be proximity to emergency services, right? So I was looking at that as one of the potential issues, but at the same time, having an assisted living facility, and he pointed it out, may also reduce the needs on those emergency services, because they're supervised and maybe less likely to need them.
True.
But that's just one of the thoughts in my head, and trying to figure out the way to...
Well...
Approach this one.
If I can just add to your comments, these people are semi-independent, and, you know, different stages of handicap with some of them, but that'd be no different than elderly people remaining in place in Merrimack, spread all across the town, and what is their distance to medical facilities?
Right.
Same, so, if anything, this is on a main road, so it's easier to get to a medical facility than something that's way out Babusak Lake Road, Back River Road, et cetera.
Sure.
And again, there's two schools there, there's the school in the same building.
Yeah.
And then you've got the daycare at the YMCA across the street, so that's very accessible and...
Yeah.
For the emergency vehicles.
Well, yeah, I, that aside, what are our thoughts regarding the use?
I think it's a good use.
Yeah, I mean, that area's been, those buildings go vacant and stay vacant for a long time, so, you know, having something there, uh, I don't see it being a problem at all. The, the one thing I was thinking about though is, you know, as a living facility, but overnight, it doesn't really matter, but during the day, like, you know, those, it's right there by the fishing game club, and you've got the six hundred yard range.
Yeah.
Right there, so...
That's something to take into consideration, you're gonna have some shooters in the summertime when it gets nice and they're out there shooting, but...
Yeah.
Alright, that being said, do I have a motion?
I'll do it, I just gotta find the right wording here. Make a motion to grant the variance. I make a motion that the board finds that the petitioner's responses to the statutory criteria are sufficient, proved each criterion is met, and the board adopts the petitioner's responses as the board's findings of fact. And further to grant the variance under section two dot zero one dot seven of the zoning ordinance to permit an elderly assisted living facility and adult daycare beyond the required radius from the intersection of the Danubebster Highway and Babusak Lake Road, subject to the following conditions. The petitioner shall obtain planning board approval for the proposed elderly assisted living facility.
Proposed by Scott, go have a second?
Second.
Second by Ben, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain four one zero, gentlemen, next up, thirty days, somebody can appeal this, otherwise, next up would be the planning board. Thank you very much, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Patrick, did you say you abstained?
Yeah, no, I opposed.
Oh, you opposed, okay, thank you.
Alright. Next is, uh, how does it...
Buchesny.
Buchesny. Bucezny. Richard Bucezny, petitioner, owner, variance under section 5.01 of the zoning ordinance to permit a junkyard in the R Residential R4 District. The parcel is located at 63 Back River Road in the R4 Residential by soils and aquifer conservation district's tax map, 7D Lot 275, case number ZBA 2025-05. There's, there's a headset there for you, if you want to use that?
I think I might, thank you.
You're more than welcome to. And closed caption as well, I believe he has it set up on one of the laptops.
Thank you.
No worries, no worries whatsoever. So last time we saw you, I think you were here a while back regarding, okay. So that, this is, this is what you wrote up for the variance criteria?
Yes, sir.
If you could read in each of the, there's five criteria. If you could read in each of the criteria. If you want to start by giving us a little bit of an overview of what we're looking at here, and then you can read in the criteria, and we'll go through that.
I have several unregistered vehicles that I repair. I'm a certified ASE mechanic, master mechanic, and I use these for income. There is no dismantled vehicles. There are some tires, because all my vehicles have snow tires and summer tires. There is a couple of things in the yard that do need to be cleaned up, as I explained, that they will all be taken care of as soon as mud season goes away. But what I am looking for is, I'm not looking for a junkyard permit. I'm not looking to dismantle. I'm not looking to have any trucks in and out of the area. Unfortunately, because of the size of my lot, I really can't comply with the borders and keeping them away from the road. The back of my property is so steep, that's also unusable for keeping them. Basically, all they are is just the vehicles that need to be, a battery, some brakes, put back on the road.
How, so, do you do the repairs there?
No, sir. Simple repairs, like a set of spark plugs or an air filter, yes, I do. But I do not do any major engine work that would require a lift or spilling of fluids. No, that does not happen.
Okay, so if the cars are there, and they're parked on the property, and they need to be repaired, and you're not doing the repairs there, then how are they getting repaired? Do you see what I'm saying? Because some of those cars, I drove by the property, I remember the last time you were here, and I drove by the property again, and the cars are still in the same exact place as they were before. You told me, you told us the last time you were here that you were repairing them.
Yes.
They're still sitting there, and this is months later. And so, you see where my confusion is, is that you're, and I, I'll hear the variance and all of that out, but I guess my confusion, and what I'm looking for clarification on, is that these cars are still sitting in the same exact spot. You told us you were repairing them, but they're still there, but you don't do the repairs there.
No.
So why are those cars there, then? Do you see what I'm asking?
Oh, I'm sorry. A couple of years ago, my partner passed away, and we had to vacate the place where we were at. I now have another job, and we have trailers and a winch, and anytime I need anything, I winch it up in a trailer, take it down the shop and do what I need to do right at the moment. I don't have time or the money to do it.
So the cars, the cars have just been sitting there for a while, just sitting there? Right, because they haven't moved, they're right where they were with the, you know, pretty much where last time I saw them, which was a couple of months ago when I drove by.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So now you're putting in a variance for a junkyard?
No, sir, all I want to do is just have the unregistered vehicles on the property.
Okay, and in order to do that, you have to apply for a junkyard?
Okay.
Well, I, I, no, I'm asking, I don't, I don't know. I'm assuming you talked to community development?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir, I did. I talked to, I believe her name was Casey.
Okay.
And she said that she didn't think that there was any type of a variance for what I was asking for. And she said that, you know, see if we can go with a junkyard permit, and that's a little too vague for what I need, because I'm not a auto salvage dismantler.
Sure, okay.
I'm really confused.
Yeah, I'm a little confused.
Why are we...
Yeah, why are we hearing the petition for that?
So he, to legally allow what he has on his property currently, he needs a variance from our junkyard ordinance. So what he has right now on his property by state statute is a junkyard. You cannot have a junkyard in the residential zone.
Right.
So for him to continue to have his junkyard in the residential zone, he needs a variance from the zoning board. If the board grants this variance, he will have to go through the process by state statute and go before town council for a junkyard license, which has to get renewed annually every year by June 30th.
You're aware of that, correct?
I am now.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Could I ask what the difference is between this meeting and the last meeting?
Yeah, absolutely. So he got a couple of violation letters from my office, and anyone that receives a violation letter that disagrees with my interpretation of the zoning ordinance, they have a right to do what is called an appeal of administrative decision. So at that meeting in August, he was appealing my determination that what he has is a junkyard. And the board did not, the board upheld my interpretation. So his appeal was denied by the board at that time. So some months have gone by, and he is now asking if he can have a variance to allow the junkyard in the residential zone.
But it's not an official junkyard, but it falls under the office...
I mean, if you, so we, we talked to legal counsel about this, because I, there was some confusion if you do, the question was that we had, my office being we, do you have to have sales or some kind of business for it to be considered a junkyard? And the answer is no, even just the storage of junk alone, you do not need to be selling the junk. That is enough to qualify it as a junkyard.
Now, if this is granted, does this stay on this property from now until whenever?
Yep.
So anybody could then move in, okay.
So, I've got a quick question. Do we know the cost for the junkyard permit?
I could easily look that up for you. The license before town council, is that what you mean? Yeah, I could grab that info.
Okay.
Starting with the number one on that sheet there, where it says granting the variance?
Oh, before, one more question on, for him, yes, sir. So you stated that you have, you use those cars for income?
Yes.
Can you explain that? How do they produce income?
When I need a vehicle, I will fix it up, drive it. The one that I'm in that is no longer of use goes to the salvage yard. These are all vehicles that I have at one time owned. They're very special vehicles. I mean, it's hard for you guys to understand that, but they're old antique Saab Aero 900s. And they don't make them like they used to. And I just love the old cars. And when I need a car, I go out, repair one right at the moment. God has smiled on me, and that 21-year-old Saab that I'm driving still goes. But when it does happen, I will take what I need off of that car, put another car together, and ship it off to the happy hunting ground. Portland.
All right.
Okay.
Could you please read the first one, which is granting the variance would not be contrary?
Contrary. I understand, I'm just, I'm not quite sure what the question's asking.
It says right there, you said, you wrote in an answer to that question. I need you to read that into the record.
Oh, there's no contamination, no dismantled vehicles, no missing doors or hoods or wheels, nothing on locks.
Okay. Any questions? All right, can you read the, read the second question and your answer, please?
Let's see, the spirit of the ordinance to be observed. After the mud season, I will have a dumpster to clear the yard of all the waste and accumulated tires and appliances, and basically make it look presentable.
Are you gonna, regardless of what happens the season, I'm just curious, are you gonna do that anyway?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, granting the next one, number three. Granting the variance.
As I said, I use these for transportation. I put these things together. To me, it's nothing more than a vehicle in the yard that's out of gas. It just needs some, some nothing left, and I can bring all of these right back to life.
Right, but there's statute about having unregistered vehicles on your property. You can only, I think you're only allowed one unregistered vehicle on your property.
Yes, sir.
You have multiple registered vehicles, that's why we're here having this conversation. I understand you might think it's a vehicle that's just out of gas.
It is not.
It's, it's an unregistered vehicle, and, you know, if they were all registered, that'd be a different story. We wouldn't be having to have this conversation. But, okay, number four, please. Granting the variance.
Oh, okay. I said that there wasn't any crashed junk, rusted-out, old scrap cars.
Well, I mean, there is junk. I mean, you're saying there's a couple of appliances and old tires, so there is junk.
Oh, then, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I was just looking at the ordinance. Apparently, unregistered vehicles are classified as junk also.
Oh, they are.
So in order for it to not be junk, it would have to be registered. Let's have the...
Town ordinance or state?
Oh, I was reading the Merrimack, New Hampshire ordinance.
So, so, okay.
The 5.01 that we're looking at?
Yep, okay.
I'm gonna try to get back to it.
All right. Then on the next page, it says unnecessary hardship. Can you read that in, please? It says, starting with owning to the following special conditions.
I'm sorry, I must have missed one.
On the second page.
As far as the unnecessary hardship is concerned, I can explain that in one simple sentence.
Yep.
And that is, I have less than $4,500 to my name. I have no life insurance other than my house. I have no retirement benefits. I am destined to work the rest of my entire life.
Okay. So how does that factor in with this? Unnecessary hardship, so here's, here's, and I would explain. When we're looking at these criteria, we're looking at the variance of permitting, whether or not we permit a junkyard. That's the whole reason we're having this conversation today. So when looking at unnecessary hardship, what are, you know, the reasons for the variance? What's the unnecessary hardship here? That we should allow, that, you know, if not allowing this, what, what, what's the outcome? I mean, like, for example, you put in here, lot is too narrow and rear property is too steep.
Yes, sir.
That's the unnecessary hardship for why you have to have a junkyard?
That's the reason why I can't comply.
But even if those cars were even behind your house, they're still on the property. Do you understa, it's not, it's not so much that they're in front of the house, it's that they're on the property.
Can I make a comment, Patrick?
Yes, please, please.
So, and I just wanted to explain what he's referring to in our ordinance. So in the junkyard ordinance for residential properties, there is a small allowance to have a very small amount of junk on your property without being labeled as a junkyard, and they're pretty stringent requirements. There's three requirements. One being that the, you can't, the junk can't occupy more than 200 square feet. The junk has to be located within, oh, sorry, the junk cannot be located within 150 feet, 150 feet of a highway or 150 feet of any abutting dwellings. And the third requirement is that all junk has to be screened from the highway or from any abutting properties. So he's not meeting any of those three criteria, so that's why he's being labeled as a junkyard. So somewhat theoretically, it could have, you know, I'm just trying to think of an example, but a couple of appliances in their backyard, and I wouldn't put that label on it because it would meet those three criteria, but this is not the case here on this property.
Okay, well, it was, no, and I thank you for the clarification because I wasn't aware.
I do have questions, too.
All right, just let me finish. The last one is proposed use is reasonable one because, if you could read that in, please? It's under the unnecessary hardship.
Oh, it says I'm willing to work with everybody to find an equitable solution to this. If it means I had to cover them up or clean it up, I'm absolutely willing to it, to do this as far as getting rid of these vehicles. I don't know what to say, it's gonna hurt.
All right, Rich, what's your questions? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Rich?
I guess my question, and this is not for the petitioner, this is for the town, really. Unregistered motor vehicle no longer intended or in condition for legal use on public highways. So we're talking about vehicles that are both unregistered and will never be used again. So, but...
No, 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 if he fixes them up, from what he's told us, if he fixes them up, they'll be used. They're unusable now, but can be used.
How does that, I guess where I'm confused is how does that fit the definition of junk? Actually, mine's an outdated one. Looks like Rod has a newer version of the Merrimack ordinance. What, it says like two or more unregistered vehicles, but it specifically says...
It has a list of other things, such as rags and debris and junk. And it says junk shall also include two or more unregistered or old motor vehicles no longer intended or in condition for legal use on the highways or used parts and materials from motor vehicles, which taken together include a bulk of equally two or more vehicles held on the property of a person or persons not operating an establishment or place of business which is maintained, operated, or used for storing, keeping, buying, or selling junk or for the maintenance or operation of an automotive recycling yard.
So there's a logical operator in there of or. So I think that's where your, your question is, right?
Yeah.
Saying...
It, it sounds like in order to have them, he has to either be a junkyard or he has to operate a business.
All right. I'm gonna, I'm just gonna hold for a second because this could, we're gonna, I'm gonna save the rest of this conversation for deliberation. I'm gonna open up the public hearing. So there, so I'm gonna open up the public hearing for people that want to speak this. If you want to just have a seat over there for a second, because there may be some people. Actually, hold on a second. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody that'd like to speak against this petition? There's a microphone right there for you, sir.
Good evening. My name is John Gorski. I live at 62 Back River Road. My wife and I have lived there for 52 years. We've seen people come and go from that residence, and there are vehicles that have not been moved in maybe a decade or so. And I think those are the ones that you're asking about. Richard Boishman, Boishane, I don't even know where his residence is, and he wants a junkyard. There are at least two other junkyards in Merrimack. One is Matt's Salvage on Babusak Lake Road, and the other was right down the street from us. on Babusick Lake Road, and the other was right down the street from us, which was referred to as Norm's Transmission, which is now, uh, not being used. It's just an eyesore. And I believe Richard is related to Norm Bartlett, who owns Norm's Transmission. Uh, I think it's his father-in-law.
Okay, continue, please.
I believe so. I'm sorry.
No, no, continue.
Okay. Uh, yeah, and variance, if you look at the property, you'll see what you've already talked about here. What spirit is there for the neighborhood and the town? There's none, except for selfishness. The source is transportation. I don't know if he's on welfare or not. He just stated that he's got $4,500. Nothing has moved from that area of the property where the vehicles are located in years. It's unnecessary hardship? I find that very hard to believe. A hardship. There were jobs available for his status?
Let, let, let's keep it relevant. It's not, you know, we don't need to get into that type of sets of attacks.
There are residential homes in that area that are well taken care of. And, again, my wife Irene and I have lived there for years. I don't see the necessity of this, um, this petition. General maintenance of the property is never done, whether it's Richard or whomever. I, I don't want to get particular with Richard. I just want to state that we are in the butters and it's pretty much what you've already talked about, is, is what you can see if you were just a drive-by.
All right, okay.
Oh, one other thing.
Yes, sir.
In, in the, uh, what's gonna prevent rodents and insects and odors from fluids in the neighborhood if he does what he says he wants to do?
Okay.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Is there anybody else that'd like to speak against this petition? Okay. I have a letter that I need to read into record. Um, this is from Dennis and Joanne Dugan. That was, not you, was it? No, was it?
No.
No, okay. 61 Back River Road, Merrimack, New Hampshire, uh, correspondence provided by zoning board of adjustments to 63 Back River Road to permit a junkyard. "I have some issue with this request. First, there is already a junkyard on Back River Road on the property that was once Norm's Transmission. But the, but these are behind a fence and not visible from the road. This property was in, was in same family, so I am not sure why there is a need for another junkyard in a residential zone. I don't have any issue with the current owners. They have a few cars on the property that are not functioning, but they are very visible from the road and have been, and have not noticed any repairs being made to these vehicles. What prevents them from obtaining more vehicles to store at this location? I have more concerns that if the property is sold and the next owner wants to destroy the house and put 100, 200, 300 vehicles on that land, well, then what is to prevent them from doing that with the property being zoned to junkyard? My other concern is shared wetlands in the back of the properties from number 59 to number 65 Back River Road. What are the implications of having vehicles rusting away next to these wetlands? With these issues, we are not in favor of the property being rezoned as a junkyard. Thank you, Denise Dugan and Joanne Dugan." So, read in. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak against this petition? Oh, yep, no, this is the same one. Is it? No, it's not, sorry. There's one other one here. Uh, this one is from Ralph and Claudette Piscopo, I think I said that right, 66 Back River Road, Merrimack, New Hampshire. Attention zoning board and Casey, I received a certified mail today pertaining to the petitioner, Richard Buch, Buchane's, uh, seeking approval for a junkyard on his property. Uh, they received this while they're in Florida. My wife and I are definitely against approval. More cars than were, more, more cars than were allowed were consistently kept there. Thus far, most of the cars that were kept there were for storage more than parts. So, that is, again, that's against. And that is from Ralph and Claudette Piscopo, 66 Back River Road, Merrimack, New Hampshire. Any other, nobody else?
I have a question.
You.
Can I ask a question?
You may go to the mic, please.
My name is Irene Gorski. I live at 62 Back River Road.
Okay.
If he is permitted to have a junkyard, what prevents him from owning, you know, from opening a business as a legal junkyard and having people coming and going? We live on a narrow road, on a curvy road, and.
So, to answer your question, what prevents him?
Yes.
If he decides to o, open a junkyard, if he decides to do that, then no, nothing prevents him from doing that?
I mean, school buses, we have a hard time getting out of our driveway now. And school buses, sometimes with the snow and stuff, there's hardly any way to get around.
Right.
And in the morning, at times, now that exit 12 is, you know, at the end of the driveway, sometimes people from Bedford, I have to let 15 to 20 cars go by to get out of my driveway.
Understand.
We have a tremendous amount of traffic on Back River Road. We do not need a business. And at times, we have had, he has had 18 cars on that property.
All right.
Not, we're not talking one or two cars.
Understood. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any final comments?
No, sir. I didn't realize that my Davis were upset, and I will do something about it immediately.
Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing and go back to deliberation. The gentlemen seemed to have, have some, make some good points. Um, if you want to further discuss, I highly recommend, I think you were talking regarding the, um, what was written?
I, I guess I've got nothing. I, I understand how, in the Merrimack ordinance, that having multiple unregistered vehicles is, constitutes junk. So, I understand why we're here, but I still don't, I'm, I'm not in, in agreement with this petition. Uh, I, I don't, I don't know why this has to be the only course of action, but, um, yeah. I'm not, I'm not in favor of classifying it a junkyard.
Rod?
I'm, I'm in agreement with Rich. I just, uh, I know some of the vehicles have been there for a very long time. Um, and I haven't noticed. I go up and down Back River Road a fair amount of time, back when I owned my business, the trash business, and then just as a simple resident, I go by there and the vehicles just don't seem to move around the yard like to be in shuffled. Um, and it scares me that we would put a junkyard in a residential area like that, in such a narrow spot. Um, again, Norm's has been there a long time and, and as stated, it's behind a fence. It's pretty well hidden. I mean, the house is disrepair, but the, the vehicles and stuff in the back is, is, is out of sight. Like I said, it scares me to think that we would, that I would approve a junkyard there.
Is it, is it okay to put them behind Norm's?
Oh, for, for, hold on a second. First of all, the public hearing's closed. Second of, Casey, do you want to field that one? You had made a comment before.
Uh, I, I'm honestly not familiar with that property, uh, what it's approved for. Um, I'd, I'd have to do further research, uh, to see if that property is currently licensed as a junkyard.
No.
No, it's not. It's not currently licensed, as one.
Oh, then, no.
So, based upon, and so, okay, hold on a second. All right, I'm gonna reopen the public hearing so I can address the question. So, based upon what Casey had said earlier, is that you are allowed, what'd you say, 200 square feet?
20 by 10 area.
What?
20 by 10 area.
You're allowed a 20 by 10 area if it's 150 feet from your home and it is not in visual.
Has to be screened.
Screen, visually screened, thank you, of the, of the main road. Norm's, if I remember correctly, has a fence and everything's behind the fence, so it is not visually screened from the road. I'll assume it's 150 feet from the house, but, um, but it's, it's, it's because it's not screened by the road, it's off back, you know, I, and I, you know, but I guess that, then again, that property's classified differently. But if you don't have your class, property classified as a junkyard, was, how, what, how big of it did you say?
20 by 10.
20 by 10 section. So, that's probably what.
Like a car?
A car. So, you can have a, yeah. So, you, you, that's, you can have for, as far as appliances or stack of tires or, if, if, am I assuming that's correct based upon what you read earlier, correct?
Yeah, I, I can't imagine the amount of junk on this property taking up less than 200 square feet.
Yeah, yeah. So, 200 square feet is what you're allowed, as long as it is out of sight of the property. And so, yes, if it's behind the house, 200 square feet, yeah, that would, like I said, like we pointed out, that'd be like one car.
Like one car behind the house.
Uh, yeah, that would be it. All right. That being said, I'm gonna close the public hearing, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, um, Ben?
Yeah, the concern I have is that, um, if we were to grant this variance, the variance would run with the property and.
Yes.
Then, any future owner could turn it into a massive junkyard. And I just don't think that putting a junkyard classification, zoning classification, in a residential neighborhood is at all appropriate.
Keep in mind, this has to go to town council if it's approved.
Pardon?
This has to go to town council if it's approved.
I understand, but that doesn't mean we need to approve it.
I understand. Scott?
Yeah, so, I definitely agree with the implications of, of granting a variance to make it a junkyard are they, they're far too reaching, right? There's, there's too many issues with doing that. Um, and I feel, you know, that there's, there's probably better options to, to address this. And when you add in the cost of, I don't know what it is yet, you know, the cost of permitting a junkyard as well and maintaining it, building a fence, um, that can get pretty pricey as well. So, um, you know, given the current situation, I don't think that's the, a great option.
So, based upon, I, I, I'm, I'm gonna go with a motion, but, um, yeah, yeah, let's, let's go ahead. Can I have a motion, please? And if this motion, if you're going to do a motion to deny, I need you to, you need to reference.
I will.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna make the motion to deny the variance under section 5.01 of the zoning ordinance to permit a junkyard in the residential R4 district for the reasons that, um, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. And I think all we have discussed amongst the board are all of the reasons where this is absolutely contrary to public interest. Um, the spirit of the ordinance is not observed, uh, because the spirit of the ordinance is referring to a junkyard, which is technically not what this is. We just have to classify as a junkyard for the condition that the vehicles constitute junk in the town of Merrimack if they're not registered and they're not able to drive on the highway, apparently. Um, and unnecessary hardship, um, I, I do not think, um, I, I don't, I don't think this constitutes unnecessary hardship as well. So, I think there's three of the five criteria that, that do not meet.
So, I have motion made by Rich. Is that?
Second.
Seconded by Ben. Um, Casey, does that, Rich's, um, criteria, does that, is that acceptable?
Yeah, I captured all of that.
Okay. All right, motion made by Rich, seconded by Ben. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. 500. Motion is, the variance is denied. Um, that being said, I can, I feel for the situation you're in. There, you are correct that they don't make Saabs like they used. So, I used to have a Saab 900 and it was a great car, except for the fact that it would slam out of reverse every time you did it because you had to put the darn car in reverse to start it. They're great vehicles. There are companies and people that probably would be interested in buying those vehicles. Um, I know that there used to be a company in Milford, New Hampshire called Saab Works. Um, and I know that there is another individual down in Massachusetts that rebuilds Saabs and Saab 9000s. I under, I can't, and like I say, I don't understand, I'm not in your shoes, so I don't understand all of it, but those vehicles, as far as a source of income, might, you may very well be able to sell them, um, and help alleviate some of the, the stress that you're getting for having them on the property, um, and, uh, you know, in the, in the displeasure your, your neighbors have. Uh, and I just, I offer that as just some advice. Take it as you will. Um, and, you know, I, I'm not a, you know, I, but I, I, I can feel for, I can feel for your situation.
Thank you very much for your time, and I apologize to any and all of my neighbors.
I, you know, I, I, I understand to hear you. Thank you very much. Thank you for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
All right, um, from the town, what do we have? Casey?
I don't have anything for you this evening.
You have nothing? Come on, you always got some. All right. So, nothing from the town. So, we have minutes from January 29th. We're all set. You can all, you can all go, yeah. Uh.
Can I say something? Thank you all. Thank you very much. You've been sincerely, with passion and honesty. Appreciate you.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening, sir.
Thank you.
Um, all right, sorry, Wednesday, uh, January 29th meetings. Wow, there's only three of us here.
Yeah.
Yeah. And all that we were looking at was two rehearing cases.
That was right. All right, so, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve minutes.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Oh, sorry, just wanted to make sure I didn't miss the motion.
Okay. So, all right, motion to approve the minutes by Rich.
I'll second.
Good, because the only other person's me.
Yeah.
All right, seconded by Scott. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, abstain. 302 for the minutes. We can do an abstention for minutes, right? Since they weren't here.
Yeah, and that's totally fine.
I, I wasn't here and I didn't read them.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I put you down as abstained. And then, before you vote to adjourn, it sounds like we have a procedural question. Does the board want to listen to that?
Sure. If you can, uh, go to the mic, sir.
Hi, um, my name's Dennis Flynn. I live on 20 Dunbarton Road. I'm actually not here for any of the, uh, issues, uh, in front of the board, uh, this evening. Um, I will be here next month. Uh, interested in the other, um, uh, agenda item that got pushed out to next month.
Okay.
Um, my question is really about, um, so, kind of first time here, kind of get my lay of the land of how, how this all works. It appears as though, as part of the variance, um, uh, five questions are submitted, are, are posed.
Criteria, yes.
Criteria, and, and so the person applying for the variance provides a written response to that criteria?
Yes.
And my question really is, is, is that written response, are those written responses available to the public prior to the re, to the meeting?
Uh, they should be, yeah.
Uh, they are public record. We, we don't post them anywhere, but they are in a public file. If you come into town hall, or if you email us or call, we can very easily either show them to you or email them to you. And I'll give you my business cards. You can contact us easily.
Perfect.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anything else before we?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, that came out real quick. All right, second, motion made by Rich, seconded by Rod. Yes, I, I, I remember, I put you on the board twice. I, I remember your name. All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, staying 500. Kerry's, thank you very much. Everybody have a great month.